The new rule is.
Yes. Item D, can you make the recommendation to just move it to the regular agenda? The staff's request. One, two, three, four, five. We need to pull the November minutes as well. Got it. Thirty-four. CU twenty-four, thirty-four, two sixteen, West Fifth. Is getting tabled. That's good. We wanted that one tabled.
Moves, yeah. Was there something else you moved to the regular agenda?
Just item D on the consent, block, the San Angelo Edition Block Three. And remove the minutes for November. You ready to go? We have five. Y'all ready? Good morning, everybody. It's nine oh-two, and I'm going to call the, this planning commission meeting to order. We do have a quorum of five. First item is public comment. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. Jamal.
Good morning, Jamal. Doesn't sound like that's going, does it?
All right, it's on now.
There it is.
Jamal Shumpert, Single Member District Three. I'm up here today because we approved a conditional use in August twenty-twenty-four for a salvage yard. And that salvage yard isn't keeping up to Texas Administrative Code. On Texas Administrative Code, it says it cannot store its salvage or its materials or products above ten feet or above the fence, which could be ten feet, but it's eight feet. He has it about twenty, twenty-five feet.
Wow, okay.
And I can see it from right outside my house. I send your planners pictures of it so they know I'm not exaggerating it.
Yes, sir.
But that's the main reason I'm up here. I just would like him to lower it. I'm not trying to go through, escalate this to another level. I just really want him to lower it. And I know that y'all are the board who can actually tell him to lower it because it's a conditional use.
I don't know how much power we have, Jamal, but we can try.
But another thing I was coming up here to talk to you guys about is about the comprehensive plan update.
Yes, sir.
Because that new interstate, maybe ten, twenty years from now, it's actually going to come up through the east side of San Angelo. And that's where you have a lot of industrial areas, like right above my place. I was wondering if maybe you could work with Economic Development Department and see if they could maybe get these guys to send us to move them to the industrial park where they're actually supposed to be.
Yes.
And instead put your commercial retail there. So when people go off there to the industrial side, they could actually make that loop back down and catch your commercial retail, your food establishments, your malls and all that. I would, I would, I would love if that happened. It would generate a lot more business and a lot more tax dollars inside the city, especially in our area. But I think that's, that's really all I had to cover. Oh, and when it comes to building these subdivisions.
Yes.
I know these developers really want to get as much money as they can. They want to maximize profits. So they make them five thousand square feet. I, I think we should at least keep the double frontage aspect of it. That is a kind of Texas country rural theme. You can go to all rural towns, you'll see double frontages in all their older districts. I think we should keep that moving forward in our newer districts.
Okay.
It, it looks more pristine to me, if you're asking me. Outside of that, yep, y'all doing a good job. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thanks, Jamal. Anyone else on public comment? Okay, so Jamal has raised a good point about the comprehensive plan, and I know that's something that Aaron and the staff's working on. And I agree with him. It's important that we, we have a, a plan out that the, the development community and the San Angelo residents understand and that we're promoting development in the areas that the city wants it and needs it. Okay, let's move on to the next item, the consent agenda. The staff's requested that we pull the November minutes off of the agenda. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to remove the minutes from November.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to remove the minutes from November. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then, item D, the staff has asked that we move that to the regular agenda?
Make a motion to move item D from the consent agenda to the regular agenda.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to move item D to the regular agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that leaves items A and C on the consent agenda. Do we have any public comment on the consent? Do we have any public comment on the consent agenda? Okay. So hearing none, I'll take a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Yeah.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve items A and C on the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. So we're going to start with the item D on the consent agenda. Regular agenda subdivision plats, the planning commission has final authority for approval. Appeals may be directed to the City Council. San Angelo Edition Block Three. A request for a second replat Block Three of the San Angelo Edition in Central Business District resulting in two lots totaling one point zero nine five acres located at approximately one twenty-eight and one thirty-six East Concho.
Thank you, Chairman. Aaron Vanoy, Director of Planning and Development Services. We did request to pull this from the consent agenda. Just to clarify, this really is going to be a first amended replat of Block Three of the San Angelo Edition. If you recall, a few months ago, they came in and they actually replatted everything into one lot. They did bring forward the potential to vacate that plat and then come back and replat. There's now created this little lot here where that, if you recall, that's on Concho, that's the residential structure. They are actually looking to sell that off, and so they've come in and we're amending the first replat is what we're doing. We're really changing this property line, scooting it over, and then creating that property line right there. So they are creating two lots, just over one acre, in the downtown district with Mr. Harry Thomas. It's CBD, Central Business District zoning, and staff does recommend approval. The only requirement they need is to submit a tax certificate. But that'll be happy to answer any questions.
This replat meets all the subdivision requirements? There's no variances or anything like that?
That is correct.
Okay. Anyone else have questions for Aaron? All right, I'll open it up for public comment.
Mr. Russell Gully?
All right, Mr. Gully's good. All right, I'm going to close public comment and take a motion.
Make a motion to approve as staff presented.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Five, zero. FP twenty-four, twenty-six, Southland Hills Edition, Section twenty-four B and FP twenty-four, twenty-seven, Southland Hills Section, excuse me, Edition, Section twenty-three. A request to final plat, Southland Hills Edition, Section twenty-three and twenty-four B, creating thirty-seven lots between both plats located in a planned development zoning district.
Thank you, Chairman. Aaron Vanoy, Director of Planning and Development Services. So this is the, the, the piece of pie that's out in what we call Southland, but it's really in the Bonham neighborhood. That's been starting to do, to fill in. They're starting to do some work there. Right here is Maple, Maplewood, and this is Forest Hill. And so these plats are an extension of Maplewood and an extension of Forest Hill coming this way. These were platted in the past, but they did not file the plats, so it's still unplatted, and these are going to come forward as the final plats today. So this does have a planned development that was created in twenty-twenty-two. It has a zoning base of RS-three, but also allows single-family structures. And that'll come, that's important in just a moment. This is SMD one, Mr. Tommy Hebert, and in the Bonham neighborhood. Again, this is just kind of that big overhead view. Of course, you can see College Hills and Stone Canyon here. And I shouldn't really mark it down there because College Hills is not built down there yet, but to there. And then this is Valley View and future Valley View that comes across. Here's some of the infrastructure that has already been designed and is working on being in place. Again, you can see that extension there of Maple, Maplewood and Forest Hill coming across, and then the potential future expansion, extension of College Hills where they connect and connect back into some infrastructure there. So here's, here's what's going on. As you can see up here at Cedar Hill, this is already built, and these lots are being built out. Now we have, across the alley, you're going to have lots behind them, then you have Maplewood Drive. Then on the south side, you're going to have just a little bit larger lots. Originally, they were going to potentially extend that alleyway across, but at this time, since there's no need for utilities to go through that alleyway, they're not going to go through the expense of creating the alleyway. And the builders that are building in there are doing front-entry garages, and so they're not doing rear-entry garages at this time. And this is just one of the items of how do, how do we stay flexible and move with our development at the time. The next plat is just to the south. This, of course, is Maplewood right up here. This is Forest Hill. And notice they are going ahead and going to dedicate and improve Forest Hill to the, to the full standard and then have those lots there. And you can see those lots back up butt to butt. These lots are a little deeper than your normal RS-one lots, and they do meet the RS-three standard. They have made them just, I think they're right at forty-five foot wide. They may confirm that, and I think they're about a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty feet deep. So they actually will have a lot more depth than your normal RS-one style lot, even with the front-entry garages. With that, the staff is recommending approval with the following seven conditions, which are fairly typical. There is one that I want to point out that's slightly different, but tax certificate, extended water and sewer, sewer mains, which they're in the process of, installing utility service connections, which they're in the process of. They did do an amended drainage study that they're working with Engineering Services on when that alleyway was taken out. Add the comment, if there's a fire hydrants necessary, which they do have on the plat. Number six is something that we are, and I'm going to go back to the plats and explain it, that we are looking at making sure that we are staying consistent with our subdivision ordinance and continuing to look at future development. And then seven is to submit the roads. And so it's hard to tell maybe on both of these, but if you can look right down here, these are, are basically temporary turnarounds. In our subdivision ordinance, when you have a phased development that doesn't go quite over to the next road or where we project the next road would be, in the subdivision ordinance, they have the ability to put in temporary turnarounds, which is, is fine and acceptable. It allows emergency services to circulate and, and move through. What the subdivision ordinance says, if it's a phased development, we want to ensure in some way, usually through a performance agreement, that this road is going to extend over to the next roads. And I'm going to go back to the image here. Under that planned development, there's a couple of triggers that says Valley View and potentially this road here would be developed at some point. The planned development says Valley View is, once you get to seventy-five percent development in this area, then Valley View needs to come through. It doesn't give any specific parameters for College Hills, but our subdivision ordinance says that as these come across and you have these temporary turnarounds, just like that one there, there would be some kind of guarantee, through a performance guarantee, that yes, this will extend over at some point and connect, and that road would be built at some standard in the future. So that's why you see that on the conditions. That's, that's, performance agreements are worked through our Engineering Services Department. They work through, it could be all, you know, multiple options through a performance agreement, and they can work through those with the applicant to, their role is to ensure that our infrastructure gets built in the future. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I've got a few. Could you go back to the aerial map?
Yes, sir.
So College Hills is on the east side of this?
Yes, sir.
Land? And there's a rail line on the south end of this, correct?
That is correct.
So?
College Hills is not projected to go across. We do not have a secure crossing from text dot to cross.
Okay, that was one of my questions.
So we do not anticipate from the city that College Hills will ever go across. In fact, from this intersection going down, it is only classified as a local road.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to clarify. That makes sense. Okay, and then you mentioned this being a, a planned development, and are the, are the lots that we're reviewing and approving potentially here for this plat? Are they RS-three? Are they RS-one?
Within the planned development, they have the ability to choose either structure type, if that makes sense. But the lots do conform development-wise to both RS-one and RS-three. Now, if they chose to do RS-three, which is zero lot line or twin home, they would have to choose one of those lots and then the ten-foot offset as you go through. So we would have to work with them on that if, if they chose to do that. As of right now, that's not their plan. Their plan is to, to create a single family structure type that would be centered on the lot and, and have the normal five-foot setbacks on the side yards.
Okay. All right. I understand. Anyone else have questions?
I have a question, only because I want to clarify. You made the comment that these would be front garages?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that conforming with what's being done over on Cedar Hill?
Yes, ma'am. Very similar structure type.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else have questions for the staff? We're going to open it up for public comment.
Mr. Russell Gully?
Good morning, Russell, with SKG. One, thankful for staff for working with us and being flexible on kind of changes in, and, and changing these plats to really fit what the builders are seeing, that the market is. So that's kind of why the changes are coming forth, and so we'll continue to develop this, and, and we understand and will work with engineering on this, kind of this new performance agreement, developer's agreement, on making sure that, that if we don't continue on, and, and the plan is to ultimately extend all the way across to College Hills and make that connection and even the Valley View connection. So this is all kind of part of that development, and, and as San Angelo continues to develop, our hope is to, to fully develop this out. So would be happy to answer any questions and would ask for your approval as presented.
Any questions for Russell?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Russell. Anyone else?
James Duncan? No? Okay. Then nope.
All right, I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or emotion.
Move to approve. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five, zero. All right. PP twenty-four oh-four and FP twenty-four, twenty-three. San Angelo Armstrong Edition Preliminary and Final Plat. A request for a preliminary and final plat on the San Angelo Armstrong Edition in a neighborhood commercial zoning district.
Thank you, Chairman. Again, Aaron Vanoy, Director of Planning and Development Services. So this is a preliminary plat and a final plat for this about six-acre property right here. Y'all have seen this recently with a rezoning that changed it from, it was half commercial and half residential, changed it to a neighborhood center comp plan as well as a neighborhood commercial. And so it, this does, these lots will conform to that neighborhood commercial. The approximate location is twenty-five eighty-eight Armstrong. It is in SMD four, Lucy Gonzalez, and it is not Bonham. I did not change that. I apologize. That's actually Paul Ann. Right there at Armstrong to the east is actually Paul Ann Neighborhood. So I apologize for that mistake. But this is in Paul Ann.
Pretty far from Paul Ann.
I know it is a long way from Paul Ann across the East Angelo draw, but it is actually Paul Ann.
All right.
So you can see here, they're basically splitting it into, creating two roughly three-acre lots with a south lot and a north lot. They are dedicating some, some right-of-way for a future road to the north that would come across to some lots that are back to the back. And I'll kind of go back here. You can see these lots back here. You can see there's kind of an access drive there now. It is dedicated as an access drive, but now they're also giving just a little portion of theirs to a dedication for a future road. If the other plats will plat, that will be a future road to get back over here to the neighborhood back, that's back in Bradford area. Here's the final plat. The final plat is just plating this lower lot for a commercial structure that will be coming in soon. It's Block one, Lot one. We do recommend approval for the preliminary plat as well as the final plat. The preliminary plat only condition is to record with the local jurisdiction that preliminary plat, and the final plat is provide tax certificate, install necessary utility service connections, submit a drainage study, and make any required improvements at a fire hydrant where necessary. And then just to note that since Armstrong in that area is a text dot, that they have, text dot has access requirements, and they will need to work with text dot to get that access requirement for both of those lots, but in this case, just that final-platted lot. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have questions for Aaron? Thank you, Aaron. We have any public comment? Okay, I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or emotion.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Five, zero. Our next item is Concho River Estates, Lots twenty-five to twenty-six. A request to replat Lots twenty-five and twenty-six in Concho River Estates. This will combine two lots into a tract of just over thirteen acres in the heavy commercial zoning district. A request for a variance from Chapter ten-three-two-A for paving width of zero instead of the required twenty-six feet for a local road.
Thank you, Chairman. Again, Aaron Vanoy, Director of Planning and Development Services. This is a replat in the Concho River Estates area. The original plat is from nineteen-thirty. It is, there's two kind of tracks right there. There's a, a full lot and kind of a partial lot. And so they're doing this entire large area right here into one lot, which will result just slightly over thirteen acres. This is Cristoval Road, and this is Jack Rabbit Trail, just for references. And we can come back to this aerial. I tried to do a larger aerial for y'all to see. So you can see here, this is the plat itself, creating those lots. I did want to just go through the, the zoning just briefly. While the plat does conform to the zoning, their desire is to, is to potentially change the zoning in the future, not for discussion today, but just giving you just kind of an update, just giving, lets you get a feel of the area. So across Jack Rabbit Trail, you can see there's Ranching Estates. To the north is Light Manufacturing. This area currently is heavy commercial, and then, of course, across Cristoval Road is, is other light manufacturing. Our comp plan shows this area moving towards more commercial areas, and of course, across Cristoval Road is more the industrial. And you can see the open space back here by the river. I am going to go back to that aerial just so you can get just slightly better, clearer view. So this property right here is actually owned by the, the city. There's an AEP easement there, and then there's private property, and then you can just barely see a little touch of it. There's private property that starts there. And that, oops, excuse me, apologize. That kind of comes into play of Jack Rabbit Trail is improved with some paved surface, and that, I'm not sure if we would still call that asphalt or a two-course to, to the extent of that lot. Then here, then it's minimally paved. It does have a Colicci base. I want to make sure that's clear. But it does have a Colicci base, but I keep hitting the wrong button, excuse me. But there's not enough paving to call that it would be a paved road to our standards today. This is where they've requested the variance. The challenge is, this is a, is a commercial area. It does get traffic through there. There is a slight little draw right in here. It is outside of the one-hundred-year floodplain. So it doesn't hinder any kind of development necessarily, but it may pose challenges for road improvements and what that may mean. And so with their variance, that, that has to be a consideration too. While city staff believes, our ordinance says you shall not approve anything less than twenty-six feet, we believe that improving this to twenty feet would make more sense than twenty-six feet at this time. And we would allow that to be the judgment of the city engineer to work with the applicant to decide what type of paving surface that should be. Is that two-course? Is that asphalt? What is that paving surface? But we do think it needs some improvement of some kind. We know this area with Cristoval Road being improved by the state right now will continue to increase in traffic and flow. This is proposed to have a couple of residential structures. There's one currently there that's a frame structure. They're proposing to move in a structure in the future. And so you'll just have an access right there for two residential structures at some point potentially. But we do believe this area is moving, what our comp plan says, what our zoning says, is commercial and industrial, not residential. But that's for a later discussion. So with that, their, their plat does meet the standards for the commercial lot size, and therefore, we are recommending approval of the plat, but a partial denial of the paving width of zero feet instead of the twenty-six feet to allow a paving width of twenty feet for Jack Rabbit Trail. And then the standard comments there, the one, one thing that city engineering is looking at is number six, is about the water main. There is a water main in Jack Rabbit Trail. It stops somewhere around that Joy, Jody Lane Road. The question is, does it really need to go to the south, or is there something from the south that would come north? Because the land adjacent is really city land and probably not going to develop, we may not need to service that with water line. So that condition, if the city engineer says that is not necessary at some point in the future, we would waive that condition. And I'll go back and kind of explain from right here. So there's a water main that comes here. There's a major water, major water line that goes there, but the actual service main that would service lots comes just to about the end of that lot. But there's nothing until about here that needs to be serviced with a future water main. So for them to extend that down, it may not make a lot of sense, and that is a development cost, and so we want to make sure that we're, be- cost and so we want to make sure that we're, be, taking that into consideration. But I would leave that to our experts to make that decision and have that flexible enough so that if the city engineer says we do not need that in the future, we can waive that for the plat, for this plat to move forward. Clear as mud?
Yeah, I've got a few questions.
Okay. Please go ahead.
Is Jack Rabbit Trail a local road?
It is a local road, classified as a local road.
And it's a city street?
It is a city dedicated street at this time.
Are there, are there lots or residences north of this tract that, what is Jack Rabbit Trail used for?
Right now, particularly on the western side, there's a large track that has maybe three or four homes on, kind of a larger homestead if you will. On this eastern side, there's a couple of commercial properties. I believe there's one more residential property and then I think there may be a few vacant properties. I don't remember what the connecting road is back to Cristoval, if there is a connecting road back there. I'm trying to think what that is to the north. I would say there's not a majority of lots back there. This is not like a residential subdivision and you have lots and lots of lots going there. And it does appear, all of these lots, in fact, all three, four of these lots either have frontage on Jody Lane or Cristoval and then these lots that are on this end have frontage on Strong Road.
Okay.
So while that is used, maybe depending on how people want to get in and get out, it is not, I would say it's not a major thoroughfare by any means and it is being used as a local road for circulation for people to get around.
Strong connects to Cristoval and Jack Rabbit?
That is correct.
So.
And is there water running down Strong?
You could approach from the south?
Yes.
And drive north on Jack Rabbit?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
And I believe there is a water main because these are serviced by city water. So I believe there is one through, through Strong as well.
Okay. Hence why we don't feel like it might be necessary to run the water line.
And that would be up for the city engineer because he would know what water pressures are, what circulation needs to be, and that would probably take some testing in, in the future to know what needs to happen. Because subdivision is the time for cities to improve their infrastructure. Now, this is not their proposal today, but we can also see a time in the future that maybe these are cut off and sold off at some point in the future and there may be a need at some point. That is not the proposal today by any means. So do we get that then? Do we get it now? That's, that's our struggle. That's why we're recommending the 20 feet for emergency services circulation, particularly if something bad happens back there and they have to get back there for emergency services. Now again, it is Colicci right now, so I don't want to mislead you by saying it's just a dirt road, but it is Colicci right now. But that's, that's kind of our concern on that aspect.
Okay.
And you have a, you have a, an open requirement potentially from the city engineer to extend water. How do we get, how do we get a determination on whether or not that's required?
I think that would be just through some additional evaluation that they would be able to do in the next 30 days. They could look at that and, and see if that's going to be necessary with this plat or not.
And if it is, can the applicant withdraw this? Like if they choose not to run the water?
Yes. They, they, so once you do apply for the plat, we have to act within 30 days or they can choose to request a table or a continuance. If it gets approved here, they have up to three years to meet the conditions or choose not to file the plat. They could also come back and request a different layout if they chose to do something different. They would have that option as well.
And then as far as the applicant's asking for zero feet instead of 26 and the staff is recommending 20, that's not a typo, right? It's supposed to say zero?
That is correct. They did request a zero feet improvement.
They don't want to improve Jack Rabbit Trail?
That is correct.
Erin, this may be more of a question for the applicant, but what's the, what's the rationale for replating?
I think I might let them answer that. Part of it could be, and I think I'll let them answer that instead of trying to speculate for them. I think it's better they answer what that reason is.
Okay. Anyone else have questions for Erin? Thank you Erin. Did I open it up for public comment?
Jack Downey? Oh, nope, Russell Gully.
Mr. Gully.
Good morning, Russell with SKG Engineering. As Erin explained, this property has a lot going on there. This is somewhat family land. They, the family owned it before it was annexed in. The reason really for this is they want to move in a residential structure. As Erin pointed out, this is ultimately the vision plan for commercial industrial area. But kind of short term, this is really the family land that, you know, parents are there moving in, maybe another home for part of the family. And so this, this lot is, it's, it's all of one lot and then a portion of another lot and hence the need for this replat. And, and where the structures are located on the northern part of this lot is one full legally platted lot. So we're somewhat questioning, do we have to plat this because their description could be just all of really just one platted lot, save and except what text dot took for some right of way in Cristoval Road and the subdivision ordinance doesn't require you to replat when it's been taken for right of way purposes, when you're, you're a lot less what was taken for right of way purposes. So, so we're just kind of going through this process to see if, if we can get the variances from making these improvements primarily to Jack Rabbit Trail and the water main, then we are happy to replat it as one lot. If not, we're going to kind of gather back. We have a meeting coming up with the city to, to talk through even the zoning and can we get this zone, something kind of interim if you will, that, that would fit the vision plan and allow them to do what they want to do here with their home sites and the like. So, so we, if we get an approval and it's, and it has the requirements for Jack Rabbit Trail, they're probably just going to sit on it and let that approval die. At some point, if we have to, we may come back with the preliminary plat dividing this. And, and like Erin talked about, splitting it into lots that would face Jack Rabbit and then lots that would be on Cristoval Road and then come in with a final plat for only lots facing Cristoval Road so we're not having to make improvements to Jack Rabbit Trail at this time. So this is, this is kind of trying to find a spot that sticks if you will, that, that's kind of workable for, for the, the people that own this property. So we would ask for the approval of the variance on Jack Rabbit Trail. It, it really doesn't benefit this property in currently what we're looking for. They, they access the property and these home sites off of Cristoval Road. So Jack Rabbit Trail really is, is just that, a Jack Rabbit Trail for our purposes. And, and so the water main will provide and get water off of Cristoval Road. So, so really it's a, it's just a, it's an expense to this property or encumbrance or an issue for this property for Jack Rabbit Trail because they're not relying on it at this point in time. So we would just ask for your approval of this. If we can get the variances, great, that, that would help us. If not, we'll kind of step back and reevaluate. We're going to, like I said, meet with the city and, and we got some zoning stuff to work through as well. So you'll be most likely seeing this again. So we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Gully, with the work that they're doing on Cristoval Road, do you see Jack Rabbit Trail being used a lot more over the next couple of years? That would be my only concern because going down Cristoval Road, starting to get a little messy and I'm starting to see more traffic using the back roads to get around.
And you may see that during this construction phase while the construction activity is going on, there's, there's, you know, you got city owned land. I believe some of the, the, part of the Reese Albert family owns some land back there on the west side of Jack Rabbit Trail. So there's not really a whole lot of activity other than maybe somebody trying to avoid construction. But once that Cristoval Road construction's complete, it's going to be a nice wide roadway and I would imagine then everybody's going to revert back to Cristoval Road. But I, I don't know why it would necessarily be any one property owner's responsibility to go improve Jack Rabbit Trail because of what text dot is doing and the, the inconvenience that they're causing as part of this construction activity. And I don't know that it's even identified as a detour route at this point and maybe just the local people kind of know the.
I've seen the local people.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else have questions for Russell?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. Anyone else in public comment? All right, I'm going to close public comment. Hard not to improve Jack Rabbit a little bit if it's a dirt road.
We don't have any photos of the actual paving surface, do we?
Or Colicci road?
No, we do not.
It's not dirt.
I just want to make sure I understand, so it's currently zoned heavy commercial, but it has a conditional use for single family living?
That is correct. It has a conditional use from the 2000 zoning update. Anything that would be allowed a conditional use today would have been basically what we would call grandfathered. It's a legal use. So the frame structure that's there can have a resident or resident in that, in that frame structure. If you're adding another one, then that changes.
It's a, yeah, it's a legal non-conforming use, right?
I think it's a legal conforming use because it's as if they got a conditional use in the past. So I think it's a legal conforming, but that only allows one household living structure, not multiple.
So if the existing improvements burned to the ground, can they rebuild?
Yes.
Okay.
And that, and that stays, I mean, that, that stays with the property?
That is, that's correct. I, I believe that's correct. Is that right, Gray? Turn to my expert over there.
But if, so I think what I understand is the reasoning behind this was, was that potentially bringing in another, another structure?
That is correct.
And that is not going to be legal conforming, that we'll have to have.
Correct. We will, we will have to go through a process to resolve that. And, and I do concur with Mr. Gully's statement that, as he said, all of the structures are on the northern lot and there is a potential to say, okay, well, that's actually a legal platted lot. We don't need to go through a plat process. Part of theirs, maybe their desire is, all right, well, can we just plat it today, receive the variance for the road width? We cannot do a variance for the water main extension. As y'all know, that's, that's only a water utility director or city council thing, but we can give the city engineer the ability to make that determination if it's required. So I just want to clarify that. Excuse me, sorry. And that's, that one right there, number six. But the paving width as far as adding, whether it be 20 feet, 26 feet, no feet, whatever you determine, that is within y'all's jurisdiction to make that decision.
Okay. Anyone have questions or want to make a motion?
Sorry Erin, can you go back?
Yes ma'am.
Where you had put the arrows on what, and kind of show us again where structures are, like what they are? Like I know it was residential, residential.
Yeah, so there's a, a frame house there, there's a barn there, I believe, and I, and they're proposing to move in another structure there in front of that.
So going down Jack Rabbit though?
So.
The top left is going to, that's residential.
There's a structure there, that's commercial and I think there's another residential behind here. This is kind of a vacant property over here. There's commercials and Jack Rabbit Trail, while it, on the maps, it continues that way, it is, it is zero improved that way. So it really turns and goes onto Strong, which is right through here.
Right.
It's supposed to be a little more straight than that. There is water main in there that comes down to and services these properties. I did confirm that over there and there's water that comes in and services those properties. These all front onto other roadways. It would be if there's future development here in the back along Jack Rabbit Trail, that's when I believe Jack Rabbit Trail would be used more heavily than it is today, even with the construction happening. I think it would.
Okay, so commercial on the bottom accesses from Strong. The residential, do they get on from Chadburn then?
A lot of, there, there, this does connect to Chadburn, so there's the, kind of the assumption that they do, or they may come down here to Strong and connect. It just depends on which way they may be coming.
And then on those other commercial ones right north of the property, that is a street there, right?
Yes, this is an improved street, yes. And there are improvements, I believe it's 20 feet wide for Jack Rabbit Trail going north from there.
That answers my questions.
You know, I look at this and it's, I, I understand that it's a burden to, to this landowner to have to improve Jack Rabbit, but clearly Jack Rabbit's a local road that's being used. It's improved north of here. If it's not improved, is the expectation that people are going to bypass this section of Jack Rabbit to get to development that's south or access it from a different, I mean, it just, that doesn't make sense to me.
And again, just for clarification, the city is asking the applicant to do 20 feet from Cristoval Road down Jack Rabbit to the end of their property or just their incremental portion in front of their property?
It would be from the corner of their property here to here if that's what the extent of the plat is. Our subdivision ordinance does not allow less than 26 feet. It says shall not do less than 26 feet. I am utilizing the Fire Marshals code that can't allow up to a, down to a 20 foot wide, which we have done in other cases. But in, in no case, it's my belief that city should recommend zero paving. Now y'all have the decision power to choose something different than that. You do have that ability. It's not necessarily recommended, but y'all have the ability. That's why we say 20 feet.
Sure. And I mean, we've talked about this before, gosh, it must've been last month over on Cristoval Road, not Cristoval, Concho, making it almost like, I almost look at it as kind of a safety issue though. Like you're going down kind of a bumpy Colicci and then all of a sudden you've got good paving and somebody's going to potentially accelerate speed, not realizing the pavement with ends at the end of that property and then who knows, do they spin out? I mean, like I, I just don't, I understand where the staff's coming from, but I also look at it on a safety aspect and I don't think that's, that's safe, truthfully. Just my thought.
That, and that is part of our infrastructure.
Right.
Trying to look ahead is what is, what is the safest circulation? Again, that's the challenge we have today is how many people use the road? We really don't have traffic counts, we really don't know that. But we do know that there's potential in the next 20 years for more people to use the road, but is that dramatically different than today? It's hard to know that.
So then what happens on a city standpoint when only that portion's improved? Is the city, you know, and it's a dedicated city street, so then the city's got to maintain and then you've got a bumpy Colicci and then kind of a good pave and a bump, it's like where, what does the city do? Do they finish paving out the rest of that? Like what happens?
At some point, the city will have to make a decision and maybe place it on the capital improvement program, which is city, is taxpayer dollars?
Tax dollars.
Right.
To say, okay, well, we, we as a city is going to improve that to whatever standard at the time.
And then again, you're using tax dollars on a road that is less traveled than a road that definitely needs the assistance, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that that one would rise very high on the capital improvement project unless there's some major.
Sure.
Things that started to come in there.
It would, like immediately north of the property is paved, correct?
Yes, to that, to that extent. When this property came in right here and they platted, they, they improved and it looks like they improved to 20 feet, both Jody Lane and this area. And I want to say that was in 2008 is when that happened. I'd have to go back and look at my notes to be sure, but I think that was 2008, that, that corner property platted at that time.
All right, anyone want to make a motion?
So is a motion to deny the variance and maintain it to 20 feet?
We would say it was a partial denial of zero feet, but allow the 20 feet from the city staff part, stance.
Okay, but the way that you have it written, we'd have to say that we're recommending the 20 feet and deny the zero feet?
Yes, sir.
Yes. The variance request is for zero.
That is correct.
So we want to, we would have to deny the, the request of zero. And then make a recommendation if we were going that route. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to deny the zero feet and proceed with the 20 feet as recommended by, by the planning department.
Okay. We have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve with the denial of the zero partial variance on the Jack Rabbit Trail and to move forward with 20 feet as the staff's recommended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
So three, two. All right. PV 2403, vacate second replat of Block 25 of Lasker Edition. Request to vacate a second replat of Lasker's addition, Block 25, which is .321 acres at the corner of Martin Luther King and 19th.
Hello, Kim Garminy, Planning and Development Services Administrator. This, um, this is to go back to the, the last plat that was filed. The main, um, the main reason for this seems to be to reorient the lots. We're in District Four, Lucy Gonzalez's district in the Reagan neighborhood. The zoning is currently pending, um, and potentially changing to RM1. And in the future, um, the vision plan does say that this will be commercial. This project has also applied for tiers funding, so keep that in mind. So currently, there are two lots, um, 1A and 2A, and the frontage is on MLK. There are two structures on those two lots right now. You'll see it on the picture on the right. And they are currently oriented toward MLK. This request is to vacate the current plat and go back to have the orientation with the frontage on 19th. We're recommending approval of this with three conditions, and we have two listed here. Prior, try, uh, prior to plat recordation, we need to provide the tax certification. Um, and we also, they also need to secure demo permits for the existing structures to ensure compliance with the zoning ordinance and setbacks. And do we know what that third condition was? I am so sorry. I must have, because I, because I don't know what that third condition was. So I think one of the reason that this wasn't on the consent agenda is that there was the question of, would those two existing structures that are facing MLK be demolished? So that is a condition of vacating the current plat.
Okay. Great. Anyone have questions for the staff? All right, we're going to open it up for public comment. Do we have any public comment on this case? All right, we're going to close public comment and take a motion.
So is the third condition that we can't remember, it is to demolish the structures?
That's actually the second.
The second, okay, sorry.
I mistakenly put three and it was only two.
Okay. Do we need to edit that in the notes or anything?
Uh.
In the way that we're voting on it?
Well, you could make a motion to approve with the two conditions if you'd like.
Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve with the two listed conditions by staff.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Five, zero. Conditional uses, the planning commission has final authority for approval of conditional uses. Appeals may be directed to the city council. CU 2430, 30 Dellwood Drive. Request for conditional use for short-term rental, located in a single-family residential zoning district at 30 Dellwood Drive.
Thank you, Kim, again. Um, this is for a conditional use for a short-term rental in District Three, Harry Thomas's district in the Glenmore neighborhood. As you said, it is single-family residential. You can see the subject property right there in red. This is a picture of the front of the house. You will see that there is a freestanding carport right there to the left. That will come up in, for, in subsequent slides. You please notice also the parking. There is ample parking. You see, the yellow is the subject property. The green are current conditional uses for STRs, uh, which are not within 500 feet. And then we have five in the area that have been expired or denied.
Wow.
We mailed out 38 notifications and we received one in favor there at 21 Terrace Drive, and one in opposition at 54 Amberwood. Neither left specific feedback on either the opposition or in favor.
Okay.
Uh, we are recommending approval, um, with the two conditions to follow Sections 406 and 804 of the zoning ordinance. Should that be 408, 804? Okay, it should be 804. And apply for the building permit for the carpet, carport structure if it is unpermitted. And I believe that we determined it is unpermitted, but we'll double check on that.
Okay. Anyone have questions for the staff? Uh, public comment? I'm going to open it up.
The owner, William Thorpe, did you still want to speak? Are you good? Only if they have questions. If you have questions.
Anyone have questions for the applicant? I think we're good.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close public comment and take a motion.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Five, zero. CU 2431, 329 River Oaks, request for conditional use for short-term rental, located in a single-family residential zoning district at 329 River Oaks.
Hi, Kim, last time. I have another conditional use for a short-term rental, um, also in District Three, uh, Harry Thomas's district in the Glenmore neighborhood, also single-family residential. You'll see the subject property right there in red. Uh, the owner and operator is the same as the one that you just approved, Mr. Thorpe. Here is the site photo of the front of the property. You will notice in the parking, um, this does not meet the requirements for the amount of parking that is required. So we will do an alternative parking arrangement where one of their parking spots is designated on the road in front of the house.
Okay.
Okay, so we see the subject property, and it looks like I didn't take 30 Dellwood off, but that one should, that, the, uh, the one right there at the corner is the one that we just approved. So pretend like that one is green. And, uh, you'll see that there are no other current STRs within 500 feet of this one. We received 19, oh, sorry, we mailed 19 notifications, and we have two in opposition, but I put three there. It's going to get better every time I come before you. It's going to get better. I appreciate y'all. So two in opposition. You'll see both of those are very close to the subject property. One is right next door and one is across the street. Uh, there was, um, feedback left on this one, and one of the neighbors said that they didn't believe that the street could accommodate any extra traffic or parking. We are recommending approval of this one also. Like I said, uh, entering into the alternative parking agreement and then following 406 and 804 zoning ordinance.
Okay, anyone have questions for the staff?
Yes, I. Have, have we done alternate parking on streets before?
We have not done it on the street. Usually it's the backyard, um, if they have an alleyway. Trying to see if this one has an alleyway.
They do have an alleyway. Their driveway is 35 feet from the front to the right-of-way, which is not quite to the street. They've had like a five-foot right-of-way. Two parking spaces are 18 and 18, so 36. So reality is they're probably going to park in the driveway, but that still doesn't quite meet the standard. And so we would propose to do an alternative parking plan, whether that's on the street or in the alleyway, depending on what they felt. But reality is they're probably going to park in the driveway.
Okay.
Thank you.
And is this a two-bedroom structure, three-bedroom, two-bedroom?
It is a two-bedroom. The applicant is here if you have specific questions for him.
Okay. I'm going to open it up for public comment.
Mr. Thorpe, if you want to come up?
Good morning.
It, it is a two-bedroom.
Two-bedroom.
And there is, uh, alley access with a gate. Could use it as another parking.
Okay, great. If we utilize the parking from the rear, you would have to probably pave it, I'm assuming, correct?
If that's one of the required two spaces, then yes, he would just do the improvement on that parking space. He would not have to improve the alleyway to get there, but to that, uh, parking space.
Okay.
You said it's 35 feet to the right-of-way? Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay.
The reality is it's an older neighborhood and the majority of these homes, you've got one vehicle in the driveway, one on the street. It, it is what it is, you know, for the neighborhood.
Yeah, the street is 32-foot wide with curb and gutter. Uh, it looks like there's approximately five to six feet between the, the, his property line and the street. And so there's still ample room there. It just doesn't technically meet our standards, and so we, we're looking at what's the alternative that can be done under the ordinance.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Thorpe. Anyone else speaking on this one? All right, I'm going to close public comment, take, uh, a motion.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye, opposed? Five, zero. CU 2433, 1620 Coke Street, request for conditional use to allow a commercial parking lot than a single-family residential zoning district at 1620 Coke Street.
Good morning, Ray Limeberry, planner. So this one is at Coke Street, 1620 Coke Street. It is in District Three, Harry Thomas, um, Fort Concho East neighborhood, and it is zoned RS1. So I'm going to go to a different picture. Okay. Um, notifications, 21 mailed. We received two in opposition. Trying to think back if they said anything. I don't think they had any comments. I think they just checked the box. But they are right next door. So explain a little bit. So this property right here is looking to extend their, um, parking lot. So, okay, I'm going to do this kind of quick. So if you notice, this technically is the whole square where the red is, okay? They are really only taking the first two lots to extend their commercial parking lot. This last lot here is, they're, would prefer it to stay residential. They're possibly going to put a house for a security guard for the owner. They haven't decided quite what to do with that yet. However, they're extending that commercial parking lot into these two lots right here. So with that, staff is recommending approval with four conditions. That any lighting shall be shielded and, um, kind of aimed downward. That the applicant shall apply and receive any required permits, and that they'll do the parking lot permit, um, with the city. That they'll have a privacy or opaque fence. So one of the reasons staff is recommending approval is they wouldn't be required to put a fence along here, um, since they are not including that last lot as part of this, um, um, commercial parking lot.
Did you say they wouldn't?
They would. Did I say wouldn't? I didn't mean wouldn't. They would. They would be required to put a fence there, um, which would hopefully help with the residential on the other side.
How do you fence Coke Street, like?
Yeah, can you go back?
Like, is the fence going around?
Three sides, four sides? Where, where's the fencing required?
So the, um, well, if they keep this open right here, it would only be required the three sides.
And the fence going on?
I mean, it would continue.
It would have to be 25 feet back from the road.
Okay.
Or from the property line, from Coke Street.
Yes, if you can already see, the, this one is, is way back here.
Okay. And then what's the surface of the parking lot supposed to be?
Part of the parking lot permit that they're going to go through, um, it would have to be a required, um, paving that the city requires, concrete, asphalt, the.
It doesn't look like that where they're parking right now is.
Yeah.
That looks like it's dirt.
Correct.
So what, so that, would they have to improve that as well? And the applicant's aware of that?
I'm not sure if they are or not.
What's the commercial use of that property?
I believe it is, it is an auto shop.
Auto repair?
I think it is auto repair, I believe.
What about outdoor storage? If, I mean, like, is there a max number of vacant vehicles that can sit outside or anything like that?
We can add that as a condition, um.
Just out of curiosity.
Since it's kind of, I'm going to go back, oop, to there, to the zoning. Since CGCH doesn't really have a, a max, we were just kind of thinking they would extend.
So CGCH limits to 10%, but vehicles are not included in that. And so that's why you see a lot of automotive businesses in CGCH. They're not considered outdoor storage.
Got it.
And so in this case, they wouldn't be considered, but if there's a desire to put a limit on vehicle storage, we would probably do a percentage of the additional lots.
This map we're looking at shows that the property is CG?
Correct.
Okay.
So if it was CH, you would have, you would have unlimited, but general commercial CG, outdoor storage is, is up to 10%.
But cars aren't included.
But car, vehicles are not included in the.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, sir.
You were talking about the ride zoning. Okay.
And I don't think it's right to put like a hindrance on their business, but it's more or less the aesthetics of the neighborhood, like making sure that like cars missing doors aren't just hanging out there.
Correct, which is why we want to do a very robust landscaping plan for them, that they're doing proper screening, which I know also costs. We, we understand that. But if they want to continue to expand their business and if this is the right place, then we have to do the right development requirements.
Condition number four was landscape.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for the staff? Might have been, oh.
Yeah, uh, so it looks like the existing parking lot is not conforming with the ordinance. So how can we grant conditional uses without having the existing property be conforming with the current ordinance?
I'll help answer that, Ray.
Okay.
So as you, as you notice with that red square there, the application is for the two lots behind, not for the current
Right.
property. And if they're really not touching that property with any type of improvement that would trigger a building permit or a planning process, they get to keep their, in legal non-conforming status. We couldn't make them pave it necessarily.
But it's not legal.
Well, I would say when the, we only added the parking permit in 2019. This property has existed this way before that, and so it has some, some status, some, before that 2019 parking permit requirement for this to have a paved parking surface. Now, I think as part of the condition of this conditional use for the other two properties, since this is adjacent and part of that business, we can require them to go back and pave that to a minimum standard.
So we need to add that as a condition?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else have questions for the staff? Thank you, Ray. Let's open it up for public comment.
Mr. Karazalis?
Uh, come on up if you don't mind. Do you guys mind going back to that aerial photo? Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm the manager for that business. We test tires. It's not a mechanic shop. It's a test tires. We're not open to the public. And, uh, you see all those vehicles right there?
Yes, sir.
That's what we want to expand our warehouse because we need more workspace. And, uh, the owner, he owns those three lots, so he wants to just move those company vehicles, use it as our, our, use our.
Additional storage.
Additional source, yeah.
Okay.
And, uh, the third one, we want to, he wants to build a house in the future.
Okay. Do you mind going to the recommendations, Ray? Are you, have, are you guys, do you understand what the, the city's requiring of you guys for?
Yeah, I mean, uh, we'll, we'll follow the recommendations.
Okay.
Maybe we all need it to be paved, put asphalt on those parking lot if we're willing to do it. do it. I mean, we just want to see.
Yes, sir.
I mean, we can use it.
Perfect, okay. Thank you so much, appreciate it. All right, anyone else speaking on this case? No? All right, I'm gonna close public comment and take a motion.
And just to clarify, Chairman, I appreciate Ray presenting this. It was Mr. Reed's, but he's out on vacation today and so that's why we didn't have all the full details. I, I take that as my responsibility, I should have been sure.
How do you let him take vacation on a, on a planning commission day? Come on.
I think he's on his honeymoon, so I don't think I had much options, so.
All right, made me feel bad. Okay. Anyone want to make a motion on this one?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Okay, are we adding a condition to, to pave the portion of their existing lot?
Well, by the sounds of it, they're looking to put an additional structure on that, so wouldn't that trigger?
That would be on the third.
It's on the other side. Can you go back to the map?
That third lot.
Well, no, that was the house, but he said that they were looking to expand their warehouse storage. It ran out, so that's why they're moving the cars. Am I incorrect in this?
Oh, I don't know.
If they add a warehouse to the east of this property, or, yeah, right there, then we would be able to then require additional paving or a, a connection back to this back, depending on how big their warehouse is. But yes, we would be able to do that through that expansion on that front property.
Right, because...
Could we add a condition that they pave any car parking spaces on their existing lot?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, just all parking surfaces.
Okay. But just a quick question though, because if they do, let's say, put, you know, another storage behind their deal, if they pave that, now they're gonna have to tear that up.
Absolutely.
So I just want to make sure that we're not hindering them.
No, I totally agree.
Specifying exactly where it goes.
And we could make the condition that it's conditioned on a site plan submittal that would just show the outline of where they think their structure would go, and that would give staff the idea of what would need to be paved and what wouldn't. Because they, they may submit a site plan in the future.
Somebody else want to make a motion?
Got that.
It's Monday.
You're gonna pass on the motion now? Come on. Someone's gotta do this one.
Okay, I'll try. Move to approve, adding the condition that the applicant submit a site plan showing any improvements and that any parking surfaces be brought to current parking ordinance standards.
All right.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second.
Thanks, Luke.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Aye, opposed? Five zero. All right, CU 2434.
That one got pulled.
Oh, well, we have a motion to table this one. We need a motion to table this one. Request for a conditional use to allow retail sales and service, both personal service and entertainment services oriented businesses within a light manufacturing zoning district located at 215 West Fifth Street.
It says, again, Aaron Vanoy, Director of Planning Development Services. We did have contact with the applicant. They do want to work with the city and the city wants to work with them on some other development items, not necessarily the conditional use, but we thought the conditional use was a little premature and so they have requested to table it until the January meeting, which I believe is January 27th. So we would, we would request to table this to January 27th so that we can have a meeting with them with all the relevant development departments to make sure this is a viable project. We, we believe it has some good merits, we just want to make sure we can get all the components to work for them.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Move to table.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to table to January's meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Five zero to table. CU 2435, 3531 Lutheran Way, request for conditional use to allow multifamily apartments within a general commercial, heavy commercial zoning district at 3531 Lutheran Way.
Thank you, Chairman. Again, Aaron Vanoy, Director of Planning Development Services. This is a conditional use to allow household living on a CGCH lot that's currently zoned that way. You can see this large lot over here just off of Lutheran Way, Loop 306 and Sunset. The proposal is a multifamily proposal that may come forward in the future. This is in SMD1, Mr. Tommy Hebert, and it is in the Rio Vista neighborhood. So we did send out seven notices and we did receive one in favor. That should have been in your packet from the church and their, their school complex over here. They're very much so in support of this multifamily coming in. We also think it is a good use of the, of the lot. You can see that it is CGCH, where we have more probably CH uses back here, but you can start seeing that we have a new dentistry there, we have lots of residential, we have some multifamily, of course, the church, and then a private school. And then back here, there's actually kind of a, a new assisted care facility. And across the railroad tracks going back to the, kind of the northwest is a lot of medical offices. And so having some multifamily in this area that's got access to Sunset, to Knickerbocker, and Loop 306 is going, going to be very helpful, we believe. Site plan right now, they're looking at utilizing just this upper portion with two structures, about 50 units, potentially be a three-story structures that they're looking at, having some amenities that they will provide outside this area down here while we're still going to do the conditional use for that, that may revert back to the general commercial, heavy commercial use as opposed to staying just for housing. That will be dependent on how they work out the contract when they purchase the land. The staff is recommending approval. The only two conditions that we have is that if this project does move forward, that they would come forward with a real RM2 high-rise multifamily zoning within 12 youths, 12 months of the conditional use approval. And then that the conditional use would expire in 12 months if no building permits are exp, are pulled, saying if they don't get the approval or they don't go through the purchase, we'll revert it back to what it is today. If they want to move forward, then let's get the right straight zoning so there's no conditions left out there. Just of note, in the future, if they do purchase it, they'll provide a property, a plat of the property, which you guys will see. And then also if it is multifamily, there will be an urban design review that goes with the project that allows us to look at the landscaping and how everything is laid out for that site. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. And they do, we do have a representative here today to, to speak to it as well.
Would that plat be administrative?
Potentially, because it is general commercial, heavy commercial. The only thing that may not make it administrative is a drainage study. I'm pretty sure Lutheran Way is built to standard. I'm sure there's water and sewer already in the area, so there's no real infrastructure other than the drainage consideration. And that may be something that the engineer has the ability to defer to the site plan, but it could be administrative at that point.
Okay. Anyone else have questions for the staff? Thank you, Aaron. Gonna open it up for public comment.
Mr. Singy?
Anyone have questions for the applicant? All right, thank you, sir. Any more public comment? We're gonna close public comment, take a motion.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Five zero. Non-conforming use continuation. The planning commission has final authority for approval of non-conforming use continuation. Appeals may be directed to the City Council. NCU 2402, 2208 Webster, request for continuing a non-conforming use of an accessory building located at 2208 Webster.
Thank you, Chairman. Again, Aaron Vanoy, Director of Planning Development Services. This is a case where, as you know, in, in San Angelo has developed many ways over many years. We have a single-family structure there and basically an accessory apartment at the back that has been established for many, many years. The property owner has come forward and needs to do some improvements on the accessory structure and has the desire to make sure it has its own water utilities and electrical utilities and things like that. We believe from a staff standpoint, this is a better method forward than coming in and rezoning that to an RS2, having two structures there. This keeps it as kind of a non-conforming use, but it allows it to continue. So this is District 2, Mr. Tom, Mr. Tom Thompson, neighborhood is Angelo Heights, it is RS1, and this is that continuation. So we did send out 20 mailed notices. We did receive two in favor. There are zero in opposition and I think that's kind of speaks very highly because the property has been established that way and has been kind of two rental properties, if you will, for many years. And so it does not seem like there's been any kind of resistance or issues that we, that had popped up. Again, it is RS1, but this is a way to allow that non-continue, that non-conforming use to continue. It is a nice little residential structure, has ample parking for both. Just wanted to make sure that we showed that. With that, we do recommend approval with the continuation of the non-conforming use for an accessory dwelling unit in the RS1 zoning district located at 2208 Webster Avenue. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have questions for the staff? Thank you, Mr. Vanoy. May I open it up for public comment? I don't know if we have any questions. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Carter. Any more public comment? We're gonna close public comment and take a motion.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Five zero. Planning Directors Report.
The only thing I really have is just to update you that we do have a meeting change in January. The 20th is Martin Luther King Day, and so we'll be observing that. So our planning commission will be the following week, which is the 27th, and it will be in this room as of right now. If things change, we will update you if it changes. With that, I just want to compliment our staff. They've done a great job of working on things. We've, we've had some absences due to some different things, you know, vacations and honeymoons and medical things, but our staff is doing really, really well and pulling together. So I really appreciate their hard work getting this together. And with that, I just want to say Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to you guys, as well as our citizens in our community, and look forward to a new year.
I did want to add that, remind you guys that in January, we do elections again. So keep that in mind.
Okay. Great.
Well, thank you, staff. I know it's been an interesting year, to say the least, but we appreciate all your hard work and you guys showing up Mondays and informing us what's going on, so.
Yeah, you guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Followed up, an administrative, the next regular meeting of the planning commission, as Mr. Vanoy just noted, is Monday, January 27th at 9:00 a.m. Right here, McNeese Convention Center, Council Chambers. Adjournment, do I have a motion?
So move.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Five zero, it's 10:22 a.m. Let's go.